Good evening, everyone. Call to order for the City of Los Alamos special meeting of Monday, December 6, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you do roll call?
Mayor Chirco.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hasselberry.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda.
Here.
And city attorney, will you take us into closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 3A as listed on tonight's agenda.
See you all in a bit. Thank you. Okay, we are back from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council is returned from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Okay. Next, we are moving on to item number four on the agenda, the consent calendar. Do we have any questions or does anybody wish to pull any of the items in today's consent calendar?
Maybe we can just talk briefly about A and C.
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, on A, I'm wondering, in terms of the transition, if the city manager or the public works director, community development director, could talk a little bit more about if we make this transition, how might the people that we were using to do this work be fully utilized on behalf of the city?
Of course, sir. Oh, and I have to say, actually, first of all, that this idea comes from our Director of Development Services, Ron Noda. The idea of going out to janitorial services is simply the idea that we do have a number of projects that are currently underway in the city. As you noted, we've gone from $350,000 worth of CIP projects to $3 million, which obviously is a large-scale jump for any city. We have had some staff leave us recently, which obviously makes it hard to accomplish all of those activities. By going to the janitorial service and being able to contract that aspect, we believe that there is an opportunity for cost savings, but it also will allow us to deploy our maintenance workers into what I'll call a probably a more high-risk type activities, you know, doing concrete, doing the repairs on the park, doing the projects that are out on the street, as opposed to those janitorial services, which, while important, maybe not have as much risk associated with them in terms of getting it right at the end of the day. So again, I think that this has the opportunity to produce a cost savings, but also to make us a little more efficient and to make sure that we're giving our people the work to do that is meaningful out there in the world.
Thank you.
Okay.
Then, item C, I think we have a little bit of confusion in the recommended action, and I'm wondering if the city manager or the development services director can comment on that and we can get that straightened out.
Of course, sir. So, and this is a project that, again, we'll be looking to put out to bid and get done as quickly as possible. The idea here, again, is to be able to use funds that are restricted, that are non-general fund dollars, to be able to get out there and do more of our CIP project list. There is a, I can see the confusion here. There is a note here about the project being north of Bloomfield. The project is actually on Bloomfield. It would be between Cotella and Florista and be able to take that entire section and actually do all the improvements along that area that have ADA compliance from the ramps and then also restriping the street after the cap and grind has been completed. I did also want to note that I've had some conversations with a few council members, and going forward, I think that we will be doing the inclusion of maps in each one of the CIP projects, just because, again, I think a map or a picture's worth a thousand worlds, it's just good to have that visual reference for everybody to refer to, not just the council, but the public as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the consent calendar passes. Next, on to item 5A, which is the franchise agreement between the City of Los Alamos and Universal Waste Systems for Integrated Waste Management Services. I believe Director Noda is going to give the report on this, or city manager?
That is correct. I just wanted to note that this is a continuation of the item that you voted on at the last meeting, selecting Universal Waste Systems as the city's hauler. This is the conclusion of the negotiations that staff conducted with their representatives in order to get to a final contract.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Just like City Manager Simmons stated, that this is a continuation of the last council where you selected Universal Waste Services as a hauler, and we entered into negotiations. So tonight, we are asking for the council to approve or execute the franchise agreement with UWS for the city's Integrated Waste Management Services for an initial term of seven years. That will begin on January 1 of '22. Again, for seven years with options of a three-one-year extensions. And so if those three years, three one-year extensions were executed, the life of this agreement would be for 10 years. All right? So I believe the council is aware that we utilize the Republic Services for the past several years, and so we're transitioning now to Universal Waste Services. And so during our negotiations, we kind of went, came to the table. I do have two representative here from Universal Waste, Matt and David. I'm sorry, I can't remember their last names off the top of my head, but they're part of Universal Waste Services, and so they're available to answer any questions as well. So Universal Waste, just a really brief synopsis of their company. I like to say, and I was telling people, that they're a small company, but they're really not that small, as they have, they operate in three different states. So, but they are also small. They're run by, I believe, Matt's father is like the president, and Matt is the vice president and so forth. And as you can see here, they operate six operating facilities, transfer stations, and they service in Orange County, Los Angeles County, and Riverside County, as well as the two other states. I believe the two states are Arizona and New Mexico, correct? The terms of agreement, again, is for seven years, commencing on January 1, 2022. And during the RFP process, we put in there all the services that our committee, that we had, we had a review committee that we met, such as bulky item pickup, Christmas tree pickup, household hazardous waste, and of course, the mandate from SB 1383, the organics coming down, that we have to meet. So they put in their proposal, all those services, and they submitted a very, very competitive rate, and so the review committee selected them based on their service, based on their rates, and based on their experience as well. Additionally, in their contract, I'm going to highlight some of the stuff in their contract, but they are also providing portable services. They have a division that provides portable restrooms, I call them latrines sometimes, and hand washing stations. And so they will be providing, as an in-kind donation to the city at no charge, all the city's special events, and so that's part of it as well. But some of the specifics of their agreement is the franchise fees. It's a 10% of their gross franchise fees. Some of the fees also included is a franchise monitoring fee and compliance assistant that they pay annual to the city of $75,000. During this RFP reimbursement, we had to have a consultant, which is Mike Ballier, assist us, and so they assisted the city in paying that fee, which is approximately $45,000. They will have to utilize and obtain a business license. Also embedded in their contract is a street sweeping. So the city will be contracting with a new, with a street sweeping company to provide that service, but UWS will provide an annual payment to assist us in paying for that cost of $125,000. They will also be giving to the city charitable community contribution of $20,000 to support the city's special event and programming. And they also have done a, lack for a better term, a two-year freeze rate, where there's no adjustment according to CPI. And so I want to kind of dwell on that a little bit, is that the CPI index is increased in July. It follows a fiscal year, but because our contract starts in January, and a calendar year, so the two years will be January of '22, January '23, and then they won't see an increase according to our negotiation of January of '24. But again, the CPI follows a fiscal year, which is July. So what they will do here is in July of '23, they're going to have an annual rate increase according to CPI, but the, lack for a better term, like I said, simplified term, is the residents won't see that increase till January of '24.
But that'll be a one-year increase? Ron, it's not like it's catch-up.
It's not cumulative, correct. There's, again, embedded in the contract, there's caps, but it is a one-year. It's not a cumulative for the two years that they didn't have a rate increase. That's correct, Mayor. All right? Also included in there are some liquidated damages, and so I'm not going to go over them. There's a lot of them, but in the report, there is some. I'll just give you a couple. Just for example, is for each failure to commence service to a new customer account within seven days, they get charged a $200 penalty. Another one here is for each failure to collect solid waste, which has been properly set up for collection, from the same customer on two consecutive scheduled pickup day, there's a $200 penalty. So there is, there are liquidated damages embedded in the contract as well. Let's see. I also want to talk about a little bit where I think, you know, I just want to make sure that Universal Waste will be providing services to the city, and typically, we have two other jurisdictions within the city. One's a joint forces training base. The joint forces training base has notified the city, and I believe our rep here said that they are meeting with them tomorrow. They will be transitioning from Republic to Universal Waste as well. And then the second jurisdiction within the city is the school district. I think, as council knows, school districts are their own separate jurisdiction. They don't have to follow what we as a city do, and so I don't know their terms of agreement or anything like that, but they have their own vendor, and so they will not, at this time, you know, come with Universal Waste Services. But they're free to, if they wish. Other things here, again, I'd like to mention again that, you know, I'm here for any questions in regards to the contract, but the last thing I want to state here is on the transition that we are going to go through, again, from Republic. I'm fully aware that the community is, you know, been used to Republic Services and everything like that, their bins and everything, for the past decade-plus. So this transition is something that is kind of looked at between us as a city and, of course, our new Universal Waste, but it's going to be a multi-phase approach, and so they're going to start off with the commercial and the multifamily, and I want to make clarification, the multifamily that has what we call the three-yard bin or the big metal containers. There are some multifamily in the city that still uses the residential bins, but we're talking about the big commercial three-yard bins. Those will be phased out first, and those will probably start in a week or so, around mid-December or so, okay? And then after that, then we're going to go into the residential, and that's going to start probably either late December or early January. We have a meeting tomorrow to finalize the details of the transition, and once we finalize the transition, then I think you heard it before many times from the city manager, we have a checklist in terms of our outreach. We will outreach the community as heavy as heavy as possible, us from the city with our partner, as well as Universal Waste Services. When we do the transition and they get the new carts from Universal Waste, there will be an informational packet attached to each one that will, you know, provide information, provide, you know, who to call, website, all that. The city will be working with Universal Waste to develop an email specifically, it's a city email address specifically for any trash issues, but we're going to work with them where if they send that issue to the city via that email, Universal Waste will automatically be copied in as well. So then it'll just, again, increase the service or the timeline of fixing the issue. Again, the packet will be go out there, and once we start this multi-phase, we already started a social media campaign via the weekly email blast, the city's social media platform, announcing that Universal Waste Services is our new hauler. But again, once we finalize the details tomorrow at our meeting, we'll go out there and we'll start pushing out the entire outreach, including mailers, social media, et cetera. That concludes my report. Again, I'm here to answer any questions, and of course, we have representatives from UWS as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the council with questions or comments?
Two questions and comments. The first, Ron, relates to communicating with the residents. I fear that we may have some residents that aren't going to pay real close attention to email blasts and all that. They're going to be more concerned about, okay, I had a green trash can, and, okay, my new one is green, does that mean I put everything that was in the green trash can before into the new green trash can? So I'm very concerned that we communicate as best we can, even if it's with door flyers that just communicate to the residents, hey, okay, here's what was in green, it goes in green now. Here was what was in blue before, it goes in blue now. And here's what was in beige before, and it goes in gray now, or whatever that communication is, so that we get a good, clean waste stream, so Universal can do their job in terms of recycling, and we're not spending the first two months sorting trash from one bin to the other. So that's one of the concerns I think we really need to work out to make it very simple for the residents to understand, here's what you were doing before, here's what you need to do now. My second point would be, and I know this was discussed in our negotiations, we were promised some new vehicles in our community, and I'd like to know, I think it would be really nice to communicate to the residents as this program starts, that here are all those five new trucks that they had discussed as part of the negotiations, and they will be deployed in Los Alamos. So I'd like to know what the status of that is also.
I'm going to have, if you might, Matt from UWS. I believe during our negotiation, if my memory serves me correctly, that they do have the new trucks ready to, like I said, lack forbid, rock and roll, but I just want to make sure that Matt can confirm that.
Good evening. To answer your questions, yes, the new trucks are in, and they will be the trucks servicing on day one, so they're ready to go, ready to roll. And then the second part of your question, as far as outlining what goes in each container, that's part of that welcome packet that'll be delivered on the cart. It's very specific. We have, you know, it's gray and everything that can go in there. One whole page of the welcome packet will break down each of the containers and what goes in each container. So there shouldn't be any confusion, but we'll be ready to take questions and calls as well when they get them.
Matt, while you're up here, I'll ask a couple of questions as well. So I know we're still working out the details of the timing of the delivery of the new bins, but I guess from your perspective, or maybe from Ron's, what is the ideal scenario? What are we shooting for on that in terms of delivery versus when the Republic containers are taken away?
Sure. So we've worked with Republic, and we were able to come up with an agreement together, so we're both going to use the same vendor for delivery and removal. So when our container's delivered, theirs will be removed at the same time. So on the commercial multifamily, the large bin containers, those will be, everyone will get, if whatever they have now, they'll get exactly that same service, at least for the first month of January. So when we start in December, we'll start exchanging those containers, and Republic will continue to service our bins until the January 1 date, and anyone that still has a Republic bin after January 1, we will service until they get switched out. So for those containers, there should be no interruption in service. Everyone will have exactly what they had before. It'll just be a different color, and service will continue on. Republic has allowed us to send a driver with them for the next two weeks, so our driver will actually be trained on the routes with them, so that he'll be familiar, as soon as he takes over, he'll just continue on with those routes as normal. And then, I'm trying to think, and then on the residential side, we're going to basically do the same process, so that it'll be a three Thursday approach, whether it's three Thursdays before the end of the year or three Thursdays in January, they'll hit, they'll just go street by street and exchange containers. We'll remove Republics, drop ours off, and just kind of make that transition through. In the welcome packet and in all the information we're sending out, we're asking residents if they could not make any changes to services for the month of January. That way, it gives us a chance to get everyone's containers delivered. We will start taking orders for those, and then once everyone has their containers, we'll, you know, exchange if you want a smaller container, or larger multiples, or if you want someone to come out and talk to you about adjusting your service at a commercial location, we'll do that at that time. But we just want to kind of give everyone what they have now and keep that as smooth as possible. So I don't anticipate, unless somebody just, most of the calls will be, hey, I noticed my neighbor got a new cart, but I haven't quite got one, when we have a cutoff point, or if we do one half of the street and not the other half. Those may come up, but as long as the residents understand that regardless of what container you have, either Republic or Universal are going to pick it up, I think it should go fairly smooth.
And the trash trucks are able to pick up either container?
Either container.
Okay. And then, since it'll be Thursday switching out the bins, I'm thinking residential, will it be picked up with trash in it, or will it be dumped into a trash truck first and then picked up?
Typically, we try to, we try to have the delivery crews follow behind the routes. So we'll assist Republic. If we do it in December, we'll put some of our trucks out to help dump all three containers, so that when the delivery crew gets there, they can pick up and drop and assist through that process. If we do it, then we'll coordinate with the delivery companies to try to keep everything empty. It's not a perfect science, you know, because we, they can deliver a lot faster than they can pick up.
Right.
It will fall behind as the time goes through, but they're good at what they do and their experience, so it should be fine.
Okay. As long as there's no situation where resident doesn't have any trash can or somewhere to put their trash, I think that that would be quite problematic, obviously.
You may get more calls that people have more container, you know, they'll have, you know, they forgot to put a Republic container out, and then our three showed up, and we'll just work through those, you know, we'll pick them up. But our drivers, for the first two, three months, will dump Universal, Republic, whatever gets put out, we're going to dump it, and then after a certain point, we'll notify Ron and we'll say, okay, from now on, if they don't have our container, we're going to start tagging those. We'll dump it and tag it and say, hey, don't use this anymore, call us to have it removed, and then we'll kind of work through that process. But we'll wait until everybody has what they need and we've made the exchanges, and then we'll stop that. It shouldn't be an issue.
Did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, sir, that, you know, again, doing this over the holiday period, there's going to be people that are on vacation, people that forget to put things out or don't take out all of their bins at one time, like Matt was referring to. I think the important thing here is ensuring that there's a direct line of communication, that a dedicated email, a phone number, a contact person, both with Universal and with the city, that'll be able to answer those calls and be able to quickly answer the questions when they come up. And as long as we arm everybody with that information, I think that we hopefully will be able to alleviate the vast majority of the issues. And the ones that we can't, we've already committed that we will have an in-house team that will be ready to address those issues as they come up, along with Universal staff.
Okay. Appreciate that. We'd love to get your contact, and not publicly right now, you could maybe get, we could get it from Ron or Chet.
Ron has my cellphone, email, and free to distribute.
Okay. Just to the extent any issues come up, obviously, we'll work through city staff as well, but...
You can call me anytime.
It'll be good for us to have your number as well. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. You answered it about the switch out. So if, because I know a lot of residents, especially the older ones, they live by themselves, they put out the recycle every third week or so. So as long as they put them out, once they get a, because we're going to get the questions about, well, now I've got all these bins, we suggest that we just, they just put them out on the front.
I would suggest what we'll try to communicate out to the residents is on Thursday, put all your containers out and leave them out all day long. A lot of people will, you know, as soon as the black one or the trash gets emptied, they want to bring it back in, especially if they're staying home. We'll ask them to please leave everything out at the curb from, you know, 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 o'clock at night. That way, it gives the delivery crews a time, if they do fall behind, they're still out at the curb. And then I would just recommend, if they miss the first week, just put those containers back out, and we'll sweep through the streets and we'll try to remove as we go. But our goal would be to get as many of the Republic containers off the street when we deliver, so that that issue doesn't come up. But it will, it will come up inevitably, and we'll just work through it until we can.
Right. And I'm just concerned more of some of our senior residents that aren't so technology-savvy and might not look at the website or whatever, and all of a sudden, they've got six trashcans because they put their trash out every third week or so. Those are the panic phone calls we're going to get.
Sure. Even though we're only doing it on Thursday, we will have trucks in the area, because we'll be delivering the commercials. If you guys, you know, if someone said, hey, this, just go pick up these carts, please, we'll pick them up on Monday or Tuesday or whatever. I mean, we're not going to make them wait all week if we can accommodate, so.
Right. And then the other thing I just wanted to confirm, I didn't see it in the contract, but 284 pages, I probably missed it. With our old contract, there was a non-exclusive for bin rental, where we had three haulers that were allowed to come in and rent bins, and it was basically, you know, competitive pricing. I understand that we now have an exclusive with Universal for, because you were one of the three, that we have an exclusive with you now for the bin rental for residents or businesses, if you want to clean out your garage or whatever.
Yes.
That's correct? Okay. So we just, I talked to you about it earlier today, we just need to
Right.
make sure, and then, because that's on the website now, that document, and then also probably in, when people are pulling permits for construction, probably put it on there too, because they're just going to call, and I guarantee if we call Republic or where, they're not going to say no.
Yes, you are absolutely correct. We will be having to revamp a number of our documents going forward, all through development services and in public works, and even in code enforcement as well. So the changeover to update contact information for Universal, and then also ensuring that everybody understands that there have been some changes as to the way that you might go about getting a, an additional bin. Yes.
Perfect. I have to admit, I was skeptical at the beginning, but you've come through with everything I've seen so far, so the next few months will, please prove me wrong, please. But no, I'm looking forward to working with you.
That's my goal, me too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question, quick question. You mentioned your hope is that you wouldn't get any changes in service for January, but lots of people either move their business or move their homes in January, so I'm more interested in what is the contingency plan for that specifically, like move-in, moves-out? We can't control that.
If it's something like that, absolutely, we're going to accommodate. What I was referring to was, a lot of times when a new program rolls out, we'll get a cart, well, maybe I, maybe I don't want the blue one, or, you know, could I get it a little smaller, because it fits better at my house, or, you know, whatever, those types of things. We will accommodate when and if we can. It's just easier for the delivery crews, because they'll go out with enough to do the houses that they're planning. So rather than pulling them off to, like, deliver that extra green cart, you know, we'll ask residents, hey, you know, if you can make it, can you work with us for a couple weeks? If they absolutely can't, we'll schedule someone else to follow up with it. But it's those types of changes that I was referring to. Any type of new business or cancellation, we'll accommodate those throughout the transition.
Okay, thank you. And just one more quick question. I did read in there that we're going to be rolling out the fourth bin to residences, the brown bin, in July for organic waste?
No, the brown bin is only if we don't use the facility for processing the waste out of the black bin or the gray bin, I'm sorry. So the, for the residential, that will all be processed in their gray trash bin, so they won't have to use, they won't have to use a fourth bin.
Outstanding, perfect.
Then, thanks for answering our questions, Matt. What about our, you know, I've got an account online with Republic Services. How's that going to transition over to you all? Do we have to, do residents have to re-register, or will there be a transition automatically made?
Unfortunately, with credit card rules, we can't transition that automatically, so that would have to be a new setup. So with their first invoice, we'll put a little reminder in there on how to sign up through our website.
Okay.
And you'll be able to sign up for, whether it's e-pay or e-invoicing or credit card, however you're paying now, they'll just have to do that one time through our website, and then it'll be reset up. But we can't import that information directly.
But you will automatically get, you will get customer information, you know, resident information, so that you can set up an account?
Yeah, we have all of the resident information from Republic, and we'll get one more upload at the end of the month for anything that may have changed in December, so that we can try to make those changes in our system. So everybody should get the invoice in the same name that it was coming from with Republic. Republic's provided us with all the gate codes and the combinations for the commercial and multifamily that they have, so, and then on the last day of service, we're going to transition any keys that they may have for the locations. So I have to say, they've been very accommodating, and we appreciate that for sure.
Okay. And is there a, is there a customer service number you can give us right now? I know it'll be on the contact information, but something that we have now to give to residents?
Sure. Our main customer service 800 number is 800-631-7016.
So if we have a lock on our bin, we keep the same lock, don't have to get another one?
The lock will, the lock will change. So our crews of our, if the lock is on the bin, you'll now get a lock from us. All of our locks are keyed the same, so the driver, any driver that comes into the city would have a key for it. So that will change, and before we switch those locking bins, we've already talked to our operations team, they will work with, like, the managers at an apartment complex or a commercial location to make sure that the lock, the keys are distributed ahead of time, so that people can, the residents can access the bins.
Well, I know the building strip that I'm in, on the commercial side, it's my bin and my lock. You go to my manager, they cannot help you.
Okay.
So is there, or is that, is that news to you, and then there's going to be like...
Well, I mean, news to me specifically to your location, but that's not uncommon, so we'll just work through those the best we can. If we don't, if we're not confident when we deliver, we'll ask them to leave the lock[1790.57] If we don't, if we're not confident when we deliver, we'll ask them to leave the lock unlocked and then we'll try to coordinate with the resident. Those are the things that they will come up and we'll have reps in the city that will bring you a key or, you know, help make those things accommodating. But those are, those are things that, you know, as well as we've tried to plan it out, we're going to hit little hiccups or little nuances like that and we'll just work through them together.
Okay.
I would just encourage, obviously, sorry, that was loud. I would just encourage at the beginning, obviously, that, that to the extent you can flood with customer service, you know, you're going to get a lot of calls and, and the last thing, and you know this, the last thing you want when you're getting introduced to a new city is people not getting answers or not getting callbacks or not getting service. And, you know, there's what, what you might say, little issues like that, but, you know, times 300, it's going to be hard for one customer service rep or two customer service reps to, to respond to all those and resolve them timely. So, you know, just, just keep that in mind. I know you, you have already, but.
Yeah. I didn't mean little, that it wasn't a big deal to her. I just meant there are going to be things that pop up.
It was only a big deal because it took me two weeks to get that lock the first time.
Sure.
Not looking forward.
But our whole team is being trained, our whole customer service team, so they won't have to speak with just one person or two. Everyone will have all the details of the contract and they'll, anyone that answers the phone should be able to answer the question. And then our management team is ready to take anything that gets elevated up. So we try to keep everyone as educated and as formed as possible so they're not bouncing you around to different people, so ideally.
That's great.
Thank you.
So your line staff can answer the questions? It doesn't have to bounce? Because I know the calls that we'll get is someone super irritated, frustrated, whatever, wow, I wasn't able to get my issue resolved. And sometimes it's not very true, but just making sure that they do have access to answers, it doesn't have to escalate up, that anybody realistically could answer like a lock question or a bin question or.
Right. They should be able to answer everything. And then we also have a team that, I believe there's three people, and all they do is answer through our email system. So all the education and we'll provide you, I don't remember the email address off the top of my head, but it goes directly to customer service team members that are not answering the phone. And all they're doing is responding to those emails and creating work orders and tickets for them. So residents don't have to wait on hold, you know, because we will have an elevated call time because, you know, when the carts start hitting, everyone will start calling. So call hold times will elevate and we've added staff during this time period to accommodate for that. But that email address is a great one to give out because all they have to do is email their information and what they're looking for and those people, those will be responded to and work orders will be created. And they don't have to wait on hold or talk to somebody directly.
Why don't you give us the email address?
I, I just, I can't remember that one off the top of my head, but I'll make sure Ron gets it to you guys because that would be the one that I would recommend. Just tell any resident that can, just shoot an email and that'll be taken care of.
And they can expect a response in 24 hours, 48 hours?
Same day. It's all real time. So we're really just, we're sitting there communicating, depending on how many they get, it may take an hour or two, but they're, it's just like a phone call. So it comes in, they create the work order, send it to dispatch, and then they'll respond that, you know, we got your request and it'll be handled on whatever day. So it's all done in real time.
Anyone have any further questions? Okay. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it. We look forward to working with you and a smooth transition.
Me too.
Thank you. And just because they are often unrecognized, I want to say thank you to our city attorney, Michael, for all the work. I know this is a very extensive contract. You and Ron put in a lot of work here and we really do appreciate it. It's a, it's a very thorough contract, provides many protections for the city, and so thank you for that. Okay.
Can I move that we approve?
Yes.[1684.01]